All right, the time is 6:00 PM. Do we have all members of council on Lisa?
I believe I did see everyone, yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, at this time, we will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Roll call, council member Mendoza. Council member Neil.
Councilman Nero does have his camera up. He is muted and he's away from his station at this point.
Okay. Council member Hughes.
Here.
Council member Anderson.
Here.
Council member Rodriguez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cortez.
Here, and council member Neil has returned to his seat.
Excellent, and Mayor Walter here. We are all present. At this time, let's stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you. Okay, I think that works. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, our first item is our call to the public. Is there anybody who would like to speak at this time in the public?
Members of the public are raising their hand, mayor.
Okay, there, did I hear you correctly? There's no members of the public?
There's no members of public that have raised their hands.
Okay. We will have a second call to the public. And at this time, we're closing the first call to the public. Item number six, presentation 6A is the Charles Whitlow rodeo ground survey results. Ms. Lisa Garcia.
Mayor, for members of council, I just want to tell you what a pleasure it was to conduct the survey for you. We did direct, we did conduct the survey from November 1st through December 31st. No, through December 7th, I'm sorry. And we did receive 72 responses. So with that, I'm going to share my screen. I do want to remind you that it's more of an opinion poll than a survey. So I will share my screen and we'll go over those results. So council approved the survey questions on the 18th. We did the data collection from the first to the first of, from the first of November to the first of December. And we're ready to report back to council now. We did have 72 people responding. Remember, staff did a great job putting up the QR codes. And they were on flyers that said, if you're attending this event, please participate in the survey. They had them at the downtown events, they had them at the rodeo events. These posters. So from the voting precincts that responded, we could see Bella Vista, Cactus Forest, Copper Basin, three from North Florence, six from South Florence, nine from Postenbut. And we had others that were just non-responsive, not, did not tell us where they were responding from. And the age range, here's a list of the 72 people and how the 72 people came within those age brackets, where they fell in. And so when we get into the survey results, we asked them, do you have children underneath the ages of 17 living in your household? So the chart displays the number of people that actually responded. So only 72 people responded, and that's what we kind of wanted to keep reminding everyone. So if I say 56% of the survey said, it doesn't mean 56% of our population fills. This is just merely an opinion poll. So 40 people or 56 said, no, they did not have children. And 32 people or 44% said they did have children. The survey results, how often do you visit the rodeo ground? Now, this is the way from the bottom of how it appeared on the survey. So annually was first, this is my first time attend all events, never visited, and I don't know. So, and, and the side here that shows the survey results, this shows the, the top answer on your left-hand side. So the part that's in orange. Annually for the junior parada, 36 people said, or 50%. How many attend all events? 17% or 17 or 24%. How many have never visited the, the grounds? 11 or 15%. That's because they may have clicked that UCR code at our parade, but not attended the rodeo grounds. And we also did have the survey out on our social media pages. So first rodeo was five people or 7%. And the people who did not load the, the location was three people or 4%. What reason do you primarily go to the rodeo grounds? 52% said that, or 52 persons or 76% said that they intended to be spectators. 13 people said they do not use the facility. Four people or 6% said that they are attend every, part of every event. Or, sorry, that they are part of the event. Three people, three people or 4% said that they had children participating. And no one who participated in our survey was a vendor. So if you sell them or do not use the rodeo grounds, what is the reason? And 43 people or 60% said that not enough activities. 20% or 20 people or 28% said that the grounds were poorly maintained. 13 people said that it lacked facilities. Eight people said no interest. Seven people said they do not enjoy rodeo. Four people said it was too far. We did have the area where they could respond that it was not safe. Zero, zero people responded that it was not safe. So how do you rate, rate the upkeep and maintenance of the rodeo grounds? 32 people said it was fair. 28 received, 28 people said it was, 32 people said it was fair. 28 people said it was poor. And 12 people said it was in good, good condition. So remind you, this is only from the time that we opened the survey that people could respond. So when we asked, how should the, how should the grounds be improved? You got a wide variety of comments from the public. And we did include all of them in the packet. So if anyone wants to see them, they can go through and they can read the multiple pages. The highlights were what should be improved at the rodeo grounds? They wanted more events. Listed dances, concert, food truck nights, rodeos, non-rodeo type events. What should be improved? People mentioned water improvements, facility maintenance and improvements to the, the grounds, such as bathroom bleachers, buildings, dry camping, announcer stand, PA system. This was just some of the comments. But as you see from your packet, there were many other comments that were received. So ideas for expanding the offerings. Again, this is a very, very small amount of what was said, and you have the complete packet in front of you. They said barn for dances, concert, FFA shows, drive-in movies, equestrian activities such as horse ownership, riding lessons, water system upgrades, RV hookups, park and swap, events such as concerts, balloon fest, rodeos, car races, festivals, fairs, car shows, and tractor pulls. And survey results on what role should the town assume? So 39 people or 35% felt that market activities, market activities and events. 29 people or 27 felt that we should allow a third party to operate. 20 people or 18% felt that they should, we should operate all events. 14 people or 11% felt that we should develop and maintain the grounds. And 11 people or 9% felt that we should maintain the rodeo grounds. Again, this is only of those that are participating and only an opinion poll. If the town had $2 million, how should we spend? A lot of comments for improve the current area. Lot of comments for town-owned facilities and a lot of comments for new facilities. Again, this is within your packet and you can see all comments. What type of recreation programs would you like the town to offer? Adult programming, community theater, family programming, entertainment, events on Main Street, outdoor activities. Again, this is all within your packets. So what did we learn? I think we learned that it's fun to put out a survey and it's useful to be able to get the results, to be able to see how the people feel. But when you don't really have anything to go on, hold on, I'm trying to stop sharing my screen. Thank you. Trent did it for me. So when you don't have anything to go on as to say, how many people were we serving? And what does that mean for our total percentage of the population? Again, it comes back to being just an opinion poll. Council does have a few survey questions that are on the community survey. And so we will also be tying those in. For our first attempt, I felt that we did really well. If you, there were some people who criticized some of the questions offered. It was our first attempt. And, and I say in the future that we narrow our questions, we would narrow the response. And we make sure that we're providing four or five questions, four or five answers to each one. And that they are very different from each other. And that our questions, that way we don't receive the same response over and over. Does council have any questions or do you have any comments about the results that you received?
Council, if you just go ahead and click the hand emoji, I'll know that you want to speak and I'll call on you. I'm not seeing any hand emoji, so.
John Anderson's hand is up. Michelle Cordes's hand is up.
Okay, I meant the hand emoji where it's at hand, not like a hand. So that's.
That is what I have up. And so does John. We both have our hand, those little emojis up.
All right, I apologize, it's not showing on my end, but go ahead. This is why I like meeting in person.
Go ahead, John, you were up before me.
Well, I just am concerned about how are we going to respond to the public? There's just tons of questions.
John, can you speak up? We can't hear you.
My concern is how are we going to respond to the public for this survey? You know, a lot of people gave us a lot of comments. I was concerned that a lot of the things that they were asking for, we can't do because we can't do that on the rodeo grounds. Are we going to explain to people why we're not doing the thing that they're asking us for?
Well.
Are we going to have a committee that's going to go off and look at all this and see what we can do and prioritize what, what they're asking for?
We, we have provided a copy of this to community services so that they can look at all of these things with feature activities. And if people are wanting more types of those types of activities, they can work on maybe bringing some of those in, maybe not at that a ground. But we can always look at what's available. Another thing is, this is an opinion poll, so it's not a full-blown survey. And if you look at the voter registration information, you can also see how many people were registered voters or who live within the town of Florence municipality. So to make a full-blown response to the citizens of Florence, I don't think we'll be doing that until we are completed with our citizen survey.
You know, my concern was the limitations that we have because that is on BLM land, that we can't do a lot of things that they, they're asking for, you know? More events, we can't do more events, it has to be a question. Right?
Well, so when we go back in and so as, as, as we go through the process and we determine how we're going to use the, the, the event and the grounds, there are some things that go hand in hand with equestrian events. So it will be a detailed conversation with BLM that we're having. So let's say a tractor pull. Or let's say a crash them up derby that they used to have there. Those would specifically be against BLM guidelines for an equestrian park. So we would go back in and talk to anybody who wanted to put in vehicle, motor vehicleized type activities out there. And we would say, these are not uses, and we would not put our grounds in a harm way, in harms way to lose it. We'd have those conversations with BLM. But right now, they're not on the table to be, be having those conversations.
I'm just saying that, you know, we need to put that in some kind of public response so they don't ask that same question again next year.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
Most definitely.
All right. Thank you.
Good comments, thank you.
Thanks, mayor.
Um, so I, I had a different comment than what John had, but I, I will go kind of piggyback on John's that. I think um, there's a, a lack of education on our part to the public about what the grounds can be used for. Who owns the grounds? Who's responsible for maintenance? There seems to be confusion on even with our past contract, what, like, who would, who's responsible for what? So I think moving forward, we need to make sure that in, that we are very clear to the public exactly how the rodeo grounds is operated. Who, who is responsible for what? What is allowed there, what isn't allowed there? So that way people aren't confused and saying, well, why aren't you doing a tractor pull? And we don't have to keep saying, because the contract does not allow us to do so. Because that's kind of what I, I hear is just a lot of, you know, we all know that the whisper on the street turns into the loudest shout, even though it's typically not the correct information. So if we could just be more communicative to the public as to how this whole contract and everything looks, I think that would help. And then really just, I was kind of disappointed that only 72 people responded. You know, it was such a hot button for everybody. And it seemed like it was something that everybody had an opinion on. But then when it came down to it, only 72 people responded. So it, it, it makes me disappointed in the lack of engagement. And I don't know how to get our public to engage more to where we can have a legitimate conversation with real resolution and addressing what our public wants and trying to come to a middle ground. If only 72 people responded, we don't know what the public wants. We know what these 72 people want, and that's it. So I would hope that next time, given the opportunity, we all do better or try harder or whatever, however you want to put it. We all need to engage in these surveys and all of this if we really want our voice as citizens to be heard.
And I will say that at 72 people, it still was a good showing because one, we did our first poll, opinion poll. And two, we got good feedback. And the thing I love most about it is whether your, whether your answers are good, bad, or indifferent. They are being seen by the public because that shows total transparency in the poll data.
And also knowing what can and can't be done per our contract with BLM land perhaps could be something that is posted at the rodeo grounds. And then once we, you know, figure out what we're doing, where we're doing it, if we end up having a partner along the way with a contract, then that needs to be clearly communicated, who is responsible for what. And there needs to be much in the way that this past junior parada transpired, reporting back to, and that communication between all parties. So that way, everybody is very transparent and understanding of the expectations as well as what is occurring. Now, for this particular survey, I think that we'll have more feedback when the community survey comes back. This was a very short span of time. It happened between November to December. And, you know, that was a busy time for a lot of our families in the community. And perhaps there just wasn't enough information or access about it.
Yeah, and I would say that, remember, that we were trying to gather the information from those people who were at the events. So the fact that somebody took the QR code, they scanned it, and they actually filled it out, we're just thrilled about it.
Council member Anderson.
Well, I was just going to say that, uh, once we get our RFP processed for somebody to run the place, maybe it'll answer a lot of those questions at that point in time. I'm publicizing whatever that contract turns out to be and what the responsibilities are and who's going to do what. Wouldn't take advantage of that at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, there's no further questions or comments at this time. Next, we have our citizen survey update, Ms. Garcia.
Okay, so I'm going to be sharing my screen once again. So let me find the right thing to share. Are you seeing my survey, citizen survey?
Yes, we are.
So so I'm very excited to say that we started our citizen survey on October 18th when council approved the questions. And we've gone through to where the mailings have happened to all of those people that were selected at random. But we are also giving an open invitation to any citizen who did not receive those to also participate. And so this is the link. This is the POCO code right here, invitation to all residents to participate. And here's the address. We're going to put that on our social media account. In fact, Jeff is either going to be doing that today as we speak or tomorrow morning. And then it's going to be a big invitation that goes out to all residents to participate. You can forward that link to other residents that maybe do not use social media to try to get as many people to participate as possible. The only thing we do ask is if you did receive the paper survey, please continue with filling out that paper survey. You're in a different pool. If you did not receive a paper survey, you have not received any postcards from the town of Florence, then we'd invite you to fill out this survey. Again, it will be on our social media accounts. And, and we will be asking everybody to participate. Now, it's standard that it's going to ask you to put in your zip code and click, click on the map providing where you live. And that's part of ensuring that every person is part of the town of Florence, as a citizen of the town of Florence. Does anyone have any questions? And as I said, we will be wrapping that one up in January 11th. And we'll be coming back to council in March with the complete survey.
Perfect. When those results come back in March, I heard you say the two different pools. So just to re-clarify, will you have two different survey results to present to community and council at that time? That show, here is the feedback from all participants who engaged via mail. Here is the feedback from all participants who engaged online.
So what we'll do is, the company will use both the rates that went out for the standardized mail. And they'll do a comparison against how the people feel that do online. And they'll say, based on that, those two particular databases, that they're 99.8% accurate. And they'll express and explain that during the reports. This is not one that we report out, it's one that the company reports out. And they build a complete database and a report for us to be able to view.
Okay. Council, do you have any questions? Do you see any? Okay, nope, I do not see any hands up, thank you. It was when you were sharing your screen. I couldn't see that list that showed all of the participants that showed hands up. All right, our next agenda item is the 2022 candidate election update, Ms. Garcia.
Mayor, members, member of council, we're happy to date a report that our agenda packets for any candidates who would like to be part of the 2020 election process, they're now available for candidates to pick up. We'll start advertising that tomorrow. We do have three seats that are available. It is council member Hughes, council member Anderson. And in this case, it is council member Cortez. She's now your vice mayor, but her seat is a council seat. And those will all be up primary. And, and candidates can submit their packets from March 4th to April 4th. And the primary election date is August 2nd, 2022. So we are going to start advertising our council seats that they are available. We wanted you to know first that they are available. And we'll start that advertising period tomorrow. With that, that's all I have, if you don't have questions.
Questions or comments from council? I do not see any hands up, so thank you for that presentation. Item seven is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda, unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is approval to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Penau County Sheriff's Office to participate in the Penau Vehicular Crimes Task Force, Mr. Bruce Walls, Chief Bruce Walls. Item B, acceptance of the Development Impact Fee Audits for Fiscal Years 2018, 19, and 2021, Ms. Becky Jimenez. Item C, approval to enter into a contract with Rounds Consulting Group to complete a target industrial analysis at a cost not to exceed $40,000, Mr. Ilan Valander. Item D is ratification of the Ellison Mills Contracting Contract for San Carlos Irrigation and Drainage District Waterline Expenditure Overage of $776.71 above council authorized amount, Mr. Chris Salas. Item E, approve charging a transaction fee amount in the amount of 3% for all non-utilitarian related payments, Ms. Becky Jimenez. And item F, accept the Register of Demands ending November 30th, 2021 in the amount of $2,268,879.49, Ms. Becky Jimenez. Is there any member of council that would like any item removed at this time? With that, we need a motion.
A motion that we prove consent agenda as read.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is unfinished business. This is ordinance number 708-21. This is the second reading and discussion approval, disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Penau County, Arizona, approving a zone change from single-family ranchette and rural agriculture to single-family residential for 801 West Adamsville Road, assessor parcel numbers 20005004H and 20005004G. Ms. Maricela Benitez.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. I previously brought this case to the council for a public hearing in first reading back December 6th of 2021. I'm here to bring in for its second reading and its final action. I stated in the ordinance, this is a rezoning for Tom Selaya's properties along Adamsville Road. Two properties, both next to each other, but with different zonings. This is to make the zonings more consistent by turning them into R118 from their previous zonings of single-family ranchette, R1R, and rural agriculture, which is RA10. There have been, there was no comments at the public hearing. And there were no comments at the community meeting that was previously held in the 2021. And nothing has changed from that, from any of the previous hearings and meetings. With that being said, as far as financial, a zoning classification does not appear to present any discernible impact on construction costs for the, these two parcels if they were to be changed or rezoned. With that, I have no other things to say. Does the council have any questions?
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding this agenda item?
No.
You covered everything at the hearing last as well as a nice review now, so thank you for that. At this time, we need a motion on this unfinished business.
I'll make a motion, we adopt ordinance number 708-21.
Second.
Motion and a second. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business, number nine. This is discussion approval disapproval of appointing Wilbur Freeman to serve as a citizen representative on the town of Florence Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, Police and Fire Local Boards for a term of four years. Ms. Catherine Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor, council. This is just pretty straightforward. Under the Arizona state statutes, the council and mayor have to appoint two citizens to the boards, the local boards for retirement. One citizen has to be the head of the merit system, that would be me, and the other, a citizen from the town of Florence. Wilbur has been on the board now for a couple of terms and has graciously accepted another term and is looking forward to it. So with that, I'll leave it to you all.
Well, first, I'd like to say thank you to Wilbur for his service to the community. He also served prior on our council and as mayor, so he continues to give his time and energy to make a, you know, help out our community. Is there anybody on our council that has any questions or comments regarding this agenda item? Seeing no hands, we'd need a motion.
I make a motion, we appoint Wilbur Freeman to serve on the citizen representative on the town park, Public Safety Personnel Retirement System.
Perfect. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Sign, motion carries. Item B, discussion approval disapproval of resolution number 1807-22. This is a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, adopting the recommended adjustments to the town of Florence Fiscal Year, 2122 Employee Compensation and Classification Plans, and declaring an emergency. Ms. Catherine Wilson.
Evening, Mayor and council. This agenda item is to bring our pay scale into compliance with Arizona's minimum wage, which has gone up to $12.80 an hour. Currently, the last grade or step in our pay scale that has the custodian position listed in it, grade number 16, the beginning wage would be less than minimum wage, so it would not be in compliance. We are recommending that we move that position up into grade 19, which will put it at $13 and some change going forward as the starting wage, which will put it into compliance. The second part of this amendment would be to place the position of procurement officer on the scale at grade 52, which is competitive to our competitor list that we compare against. This position is going to be responsible for handling procurement and the RFPs and the CPI projects and many other responsibilities within the finance department. This will take some of those responsibilities off of the department level, our department director level responsibilities to free them up to do other things. This position would be very involved in making sure that all of the scope of contracts is put into place when we're doing projects. They'll review the bids, put bids together, that type of thing. The funds are being assigned from the HERF funds and then also one of the positions in Chris Solis's staff is he's giving up, which is his administrative assistant, who did a lot of these things for him. So that's being shifted into the salary of this position. I think, Becky, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yes, I just wanted to let everyone know that this position is being split 25% into general fund, 25% into HERF, 25% into water, and 25% into sewer. And we have the budget covered in there because the employee that vacated their position was budgeted in the general fund and in the HERF fund. So Chris has given up this position so that we can create a very solid procurement officer that can assist the other department managers when they're having to write scope of services. Right now, some of the department managers are doing it. Carl and I have to do it, we stop what we're doing and we write scopes and then they have to be reviewed several times by several different people. If you have a qualified person to do this, it only has to happen one time. The department comes in and tells the person what they need. They have a full variety of tools that they can go to to write a scope of work. They can go and post their bids out, whether and then also assist in these major CIP projects that we're having to bid out, they're very complicated, they're legal. We have to have legal review done on them, so we need someone that's very knowledgeable about all of these things. That's why we're, this is like a win-win position for the whole town to be able to do something like this.
Presenting, it sounds like you have more.
No, I'm done.
All right, Vice Mayor.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, then, because at first I thought we were creating like a new position and bring adding on personnel, we're really just taking a current position that's been vacated. We're kind of revamping it to where it benefits all of our departments versus just before it was only a benefit to wastewater and sewer or yeah, water.
HERF and general.
Right. Okay, so then we're not really creating an additional
Body.
Body, we are just making this person have a broader scope of responsibilities that benefits all departments versus Chris Solis graciously has agreed to do this.
Yes, and not only that, this position, I just will tell council, this position is a higher grade than the one that was vacated, but it's because of the responsibility and knowledge base that the person has to have in order to perform the duties effectively and efficiently and be able to have the contacts that they need to get these things done.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes, I'm so pleased to see this position come about. I spent a lot of my career in purchasing. I know that is a very unique profession. I think this will give the town the benefit of having someone who can be an expert in purchasing and negotiating. And we can share this across all departments. You know, there may be some synergism that we can get out of this. And I just want to compliment Chris and Becky for putting this together. Thank you so much. The other thing I wanted to just make sure that I understood right. The cost, you know, the cost of living or not the cost of living, but the minimum wage, it's my understanding that it's going to cost us about $9,300 a year overall.
Actually, right now, we are not increasing the budget for those departments that have part-time employees, which mainly this affects part-time employees, the $12.80. They're gonna have to manage the budget that they're already allocated for this current fiscal year and manage their money and their and the number of hours that these individuals work until the end of the year. And then we'll budget into the next fiscal year with the total annual cost to the increase.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Will that impact any of the services that we provide our community?
It shouldn't, no.
Okay, because a lot of those are your and is your
In community services, the majority are in community services, yes.
Yes, and that's why, you know, as you're looking ahead and you're going into, you know, safety and summer and the different recreation programs and the aquatic center, I just want to make sure that we're cognizant of that as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Neil? Your hand popped up for a second, do you mean?
Totally forgot how to raise my hand, I just figured out how to do it and I ain't got nothing.
All right, well, with that being presented, thank you very much, we need a motion.
My motion, we approve resolution number 1807 dash, I'm sorry, 1807-22.
Very good.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item C is discussion approval disapproval of authorized staff to proceed with a utility rate study.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council. Yes, I'm here tonight to present. And as for your input on the utility rate study, we, our last rate study was started in 2017 and adopted in 2018. And normally, rate studies are done every three to five years. For us, we, I feel that we need to go ahead and start this rate study as soon as possible. We've had a lot of things happen. One of them is the explosion in our community. But one of the most criticals is the loss of the wastewater revenues because of the closure of ADOC and that revenue is fast declining. I put a little chart in here to kind of show you what's going on. We've had a lot of things changed, one of them was our ARPA funds and our excise tax monies that are now being utilized to pay for some of the infrastructure that was being planned. We also have two WIFIL loans. Luckily, the water one fell in line, pardon me, this, the wastewater one fell in line with what was being planned, but now that wastewater debt is being paid out over 20 years instead of being pay-as-you-go fast, full $5 million outlay in capital. So those, all of those things are affecting the rates that we have in place right now. We need to prepare for the future to see how these rates are going to affect us. And as you know, whenever something changes in the rates, it affects all the classifications of rate payers. So we need to get a consultant on board that is very familiar with utility rate studies to go ahead and start this process. It takes, it'll probably take anywhere from six to eight months to get this study done. And so it's very critical that we can get an RFP out on the street, select a consultant, and then go start going forward with this. Mr. Solis is currently preparing a new CIP based on the, all of the growth and changes that are occurring right now. And we should have that ready for the consultant when we start, whenever we get to that portion of the study. The other thing I'm asking is that you consider, I gave you four different options. We, we normally increase rates in April. Last year, we deferred. Mr. Billingsley decided that we should forego the rate increase because of all of the things that were going on with COVID. We didn't want to impact the citizens when they were already having a hard time. And we, fortunately for us, our water and sewer funds have ample cash in them to be able to survive this. So we've, we have asked that if you want to go ahead and start with a rate increase again in April, and if so, do you want to bump it up to the next step? Or do you want to catch up to the current step, which would mean you would bounce up two steps? Or do you want to change the implementation date to July 1st to coincide with the fiscal year with either the 21 or the 22 rates? Or do you want to do a utility rate study to evaluate the existing conditions, rates, debt service, operational costs, and capital outlay? And then set the rate? Or do you not want to change rates? I need direction from council on how they would like to proceed with this.
All right, I am going to ask council what direction feedback we want to give, because this is something we all have to share our input so that way collectively we can come to a determination. Councilmember Anderson, it looks like you are willing to kick off this conversation, so thank you, sir. Oops, unmute. You're still muted. There you go.
But I mean, I'm sorry, we definitely need to have the rate study just to find out what the impact would be one way or the other. So I'm definitely in favor of doing a rate study. You know, we have cut off needing an increase. I'm assuming that we're going to need an increase, but the rate study may come back and say it may not be as much as we visual anticipated, or it may be more. So we definitely need to have the rate study.
And what about your input in regards to Ms. Jimenez's question regarding when and what?
Well, I would like to see the rate study to make that decision.
Thank you. Councilmember Hughes, you are next.
I think that it stands to reason probably moving it to July, when it's the calendar year, so that all the departments can can gear up what their, what the finance is. It would be a little bit easier on us to try to plan for the next 12 months. If, you know, and and everybody has the same. I think April would be too soon. But I do think we'll probably end up having to have a rate change.
Vice Mayor?
I feel like we're always talking about rate increases and I'm not a fan of them. So for me, if given the choice, as always, I would say, no, don't increase the rates. But I definitely do not want to increase the rates until we have this rate study done because I don't want to increase them in April to then do a rate study, to then have to increase them again. I would much rather just wait so that way we know what we need to be at. And then we can do one increase and then hopefully leave our, leave our rates where they're at for a little bit because I feel like we're constantly having this conversation about increasing rates.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yeah, I completely agree, I think we need to do a rate study before we make any action items and that we need to be consistent with the rates going forward. So I think that, you know, whenever the implementation could be, if we can start on a calendar year, starting in January, it'd be fantastic. But otherwise, I think however long that rate study will be will sort of indicate when we could implement those rates. But I think that it's important that we're consistent and not constantly looking to raise our rates, that we have a plan and that we know exactly what it's going to be. And I think that the circumstances, you know, might have changed to where we need that rate study, so.
Are there any other council members that wish to comment as well at this time? All right, so I am in agreeance, I feel that All right, so I am in agreeance, I feel that as with everybody, we need to hold off on any rate increases at this time until the next budgetary year. We are in favor and supportive of moving forward with the study and that will allow our department heads to coordinate moving forward pending council approval and it also allows for citizen communication and feedback.
Thank you. I do wanna make a comment on the rates. I understand that it's not favorable or you don't feel it's favorable to raise them every year, but there's a reason that the rates are being raised like this every year. It's to incrementally adjust the rates to where they should be. Instead of hitting the citizens all at once with a huge rate increase, it's eased in. And that's why we do it this way. If it's not necessary, sure, we won't do it. But we rely on the rate consultant to tell us how they should be implemented and to make recommendations to the council. Also, I did need to let you know that I have budgeted this year for a utility rate study, but this study will probably go over this year and next year. I budgeted eighty thousand dollars this year. So I have plenty of money to do the utility rate study. So just as an F Y I, we try to plan these things as best as possible and we try to track our revenues, make sure that we're covering our expenditures and that we have plenty of cash available should we, should we need it for our big projects. And, and with the growth spurt that we have right now, I fully anticipate a lot of projects being all of a sudden because of the way that development is going right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, we do need a motion, council, for an approval to authorize a, proceed with a utility rate study.
I motion that we authorize staff to proceed with the utility rate study.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. You're welcome, thank you. Item D is approval of purchasing a Pierce enforcer fire apparatus and apparatus equipment from Hughes Fire Equipment in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Mr. Jim Walter?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, excited tonight to talk about moving forward on the purchase and replacement of our reserve apparatus. We've, we've had some pretty costly and timely issues with that truck. And just to take you back and a little bit of history is on October eighteenth of this year, resolution number one seven eight nine dash twenty-one secured seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in financing for this, this project. What we're talking about tonight is to be able to move forward with that, with this program. Because since that time, since October when it was approved, we've had three design meetings with our, our manufacturer to build the truck. And we've decided on going with a smaller chassis on, on this truck than our current frontline engine that you see down at Station One and still be able to have the features, the setups, the equipment, everything we're carrying to be standardized with, with our other trucks. So in doing that, we didn't take it lightly. We were fortunate enough that Fort McDowell had just taken delivery of this, this type of chassis that we're looking at with some of the unique options that we wanna build into it. So they allowed us to come out, take a look and we agreed that, that this truck is going to work well for us. So we spent those three meetings designing it and, and moving forward. And kind of the timeliness of, of this is, as with a lot of things that are going on right now, the manufacturer Pierce, which is the same manufacturer of, of all of the current fire apparatus that we have, they're projecting a very large price increase coming up. They estimate in early February, so in order to stay ahead of this and make sure that this project's gonna be able to come in at the price point that we talked about, that's, that's why we're moving forward. Now, this, this whole, the, the complete seven hundred and fifty thousand that was approved is, there's kinda three components to this. There's obviously the purchase of the new apparatus. There's also, I'm gonna say use the value of the current apparatus. That's either gonna be a trade-in or a private sale and I'll talk about that a little bit more in a second. And also all of the equipment that's gonna go on the truck. So since we do have some, some time to be able to bring all that in, we wanna be able to move forward on getting that pricing for the apparatus that, that we wanna purchase before the large price increase. Now, when we were talking in October, that truck that we're talking about replacing, the two thousand and two Pierce Contender, originally, we just thought of it as a, a trade-in, but the way that the current market is and, and speaking to our, our rep was very helpful in this area. There's currently departments that are looking for trucks like that for their own fleet. So we're looking at the, the two options to get the best financial impact on either trade-in or, or private sale. So we haven't made that decision yet, but we have decided inspect out this truck as the one we wanna purchase. So I guess with that kinda just went over some brief, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Vice Mayor?
Uh, yes, what is the anticipated life use for this equipment? Like, how long should they normally last us? Two thousand and two, that, that's a pretty old piece of equipment. So how long should we anticipate this one to last us?
Yeah, it, I mean, it's really, it's dependent on use and, and time, so there's no real, like, let's say our, our structural firefighting gear, that is ten years only. We, we can only use it for ten years and it's expired. With something like an apparatus, it depends on, you know, how much we're using, what we're using it for, maintenance, that sort of thing. I agree, the two thousand and two is, is pretty aged. That would definitely be a little bit longer than we'd like to have them. But our current, the current frontline truck that you see down here at the station, that's a two thousand and twelve and I would say that, that that one is also, that one is also aged. But, but we do with Dave over in Fleet, we have a very good vendor that's very responsive to us and helps us keep those trucks on the road, so, you know, we, we, we definitely take that into account. You know, availability of parts, length out of service, that truck is still serving its need and will do, will do wonderful for us as a reserve status.
Are there any other questions or comments? Council member Mendoza?
Yes, I just, in the future, when you send information up, can you send a picture of the apparatus? So we can see what we would be purchasing in the future.
Yes, so I would, I would, I would love to do that. Unfortunately, with this, this is a, this is a pure custom build. So it is, there's actually a really good doc, documentary, I think it was the Discovery Channel that did a, how this Pierce manufacturer works up in Appleton. They start with sheet metal and by the time they're done, we have a fully functional apparatus and pump and everything. They build everything. So what I will do for you is when we go to the first, what they called the, I believe it's the design meeting, we actually go up to Appleton and they will have the drawings there of what our truck is going to look like. So I will make sure that once we, once we complete all that and we have a, a, a picture, we'll, we'll definitely get that out to you.
Very cool. Are there any other questions or comments? All right, seeing no further, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the purchase of the Pierce enforcer fire apparatus and apparatus equipment from Hughes Fire Equipment in the amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
A second.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next up is our manager's report.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, I'll try to be brief as, as possible on this. Couple of things to touch on. Number one, we received a grant recently from the Leary Firefighters Foundation for twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars to purchase an additional washer, a strac, extractor for our fire equipment. So that's a very positive development. We'll now have extractors in, in both stations. We went from having none last year to, to having one in, in each station now, so that's significant success. I wanted to touch on a couple of items on transportation and infrastructure. There are two items listed in your report. The first one is the traffic signal at Hunt Highway and Franklin Road with the development that's occurring, that corridor. The studies that have been completed indicate that there needs to be a signal installed at that location. Chris and his team actually hired a consultant to try and figure out what our options are between this new signal that's going to be required and the signal that's currently in front of the hospital to see if there were options to interconnect those signals in, in terms of operations to make sure that they operate correctly and, and that they're safe. The study indicated that you cannot connect those signals, they're too close together. So Chris is focusing with the development community on constructing a new signal at Hunt Highway and Franklin Road and anticipates having that completed before the new American Leadership Academy School goes in place. The second item is the well number five drilling project. We've given some updates to council in terms of anticipated timeframe for them to start drilling. As a matter of fact, our pre-construction meeting was held in December. Just like a lot of things, and I'm sure you guys are hearing it, construction materials are in short supply and they've become long lead items. So that project is gonna be delayed until February. The last thing I wanted to touch on is the economic outlook that's at the, at the very end of, of the report. I'm happy to report that once again, collections are up for this year as compared to last year across the board for the most part. We have seen a little bit of slowdown in single-family permits as related to last year, but we anticipate that that's going to quickly change with Mesquite Trails, Bisbee Ranch and, and other projects coming online. That's my report for this evening.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Billingsley?
Yes.
Oh, council member Anderson, go ahead.
Well, I was concerned about the, the traffic lights at Franklin Road and I was wondering why A L A is not looping their driveways together. You know, when, when that was all talked about originally, the high school was going to share the driveway for the K A. They own all that property in there, so it seems like that would be the best thing to do. We wouldn't have to have another traffic light.
Council member, I, I think I heard your question. Originally, the plan was to build the high school right in back of the existing elementary school and to share access. For whatever reason, the folks that are building the new school chose not to go that direction. They have then purchased a parcel that's north of, of Franklin Road, so that would make it for the most part adjacent, north to south. I know that there's an out parcel there for a church that's in between the two and that's where the construction is occurring currently. The, all of, of the access and circulation was, was analyzed through a traffic impact study. What I'll do is tomorrow, I'll get with Chris and have Chris put something together with respect to that analysis and the circulation there and, and we'll get that out to council.
Okay, thank you. I, I remembered that they were supposed to share that, I just didn't know all the details.
Yes, sir.
All right, up next is our department head reports. Is there anybody who has any questions on any of the items within those reports? Yeah, Vice Mayor Cortez?
Um, I don't really know, I don't really have a question, I have a comment and this will be for, for Chief Walls. I get, I have received an increase in complaints about vandalism, whether it be kids or our local homeless population that is starting to concern not only our business owners but our residents. And so I don't know how to address that. I know in my ride-along that I had, the conversation that I had during that time was that there seems to be no system set up for when someone has been released from one of the other facilities that is here. So they're just kinda pushed out into the street and there's nowhere for them to go. So I would like for us to try to work with Pinell County and everybody and come up with some kinda system. We have to because they, we can't just keep, continue to allow people to be dumped into our street and then, and then we have to figure out how to deal with them if they have no place to go. Because it, you know, our, our citizens are complaining about it and our citizens are starting to feel like their streets aren't safe, especially with the increase in vandalism that I've heard of today. You know, it was two kids out breaking out windows and things like that, so I hope they were caught. And think, you know, I hope whoever the unsafe driver was that took out one of the, took out my planter on Main Street is caught as well, just, you know, kinda things that concern me. And then I would like to do something also where we can figure out a way to make Hunt Highway a little bit safer for everybody because there's not enough signals on Hunt Highway to slow traffic down. And we all know what the speed limit is and we all know that nobody drives the speed limit, including myself. I will self-report that I typically am driving faster than I should be on that road, but it, it is extremely unsafe for our residents and the people that are coming into town because the speeds are getting higher. So, you know, before it used to be like, everybody was going, you know, within five to ten miles over the speed limit. Now I'm watching people, I'm going faster than I think I should and they're still going around me so that the speed is increasing and it's getting harder to even get on to Hunt Highway because people are going, it's like everybody's in this big hurry, I can't figure out why. So those are just some things that I would like for us to start to think about how we can come up with resolutions for our citizens.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, thank you so much, Vice Mayor Cortez, for those particular concerns. I can assure you, we are working on each and every one of those. Just here recently, we had some conversations with Core Civic and of course Pinell County in reference to how they go in and release prisoners. We have made some strides in that area where we were getting in excess of twelve prisoners being released at night for us to go ahead and deal with. We have gotten that extremely down. We'll continue to go ahead and work on that and address that concern. And in reference to a lot of the other things that you've mentioned, we're working direct patrols, trying to ensure that the homeless people that we encounter, we identify and encourage to move on. We're also working the vandalism issue that you addressed as well. Not very much of a lead, but we do have some leads and we'll go ahead and move forward on that as well. And as you know, we are currently working Operation Complete Stop up there in the northern, northern region as we speak. I'm set to go and provide the town manager report on that probably mid-month. So we are trying to work a lot of those issues and I look forward to being able to provide council some direct information later on this month.
Thank you, Chief. Did that answer your question, Vice Mayor?
It did, and I am aware of the complete stop because I got stopped for not making a complete stop.
All right, are there any other questions or comments for any department heads? Council member Hughes?
Um, I, I feel, I kinda feel bad that I'm on like a broken record on this weeds and the, the trash problem, but this is for community development. But this is for community development. And he, he put the, he put the list together, Keith, he put the list together. And I'm more discouraged by this list than before when I didn't know what they were. It's like nothing's been solved. It's just all open cases and some of them are a year, year and a half old. I don't see anything going to the, going to court. There's a couple of things that are supposed to, on one fourteen, go to court. I, I'm just a little disappointed why we're not using the clean and lean to get some of these properties clean, uh, cleared out. Maybe it's a cliff question.
I don't see Keith on here.
No, okay, maybe it's a cliff question.
That's okay. Mr. Billingsley, have you received an update at all that could help answer that?
I, I agree with Councilmember Hughes. It's, it's probably a cliff question. I know that reports are, are submitted for review. I agree. A lot of those cases have been on for quite some time, but it takes quite some time to, to go through the process from first warning to citation and it's much longer when it goes to the court process. I think that there were three I've seen recently that were being turned over to the court, but perhaps Cliff can give us an update on that.
Yeah, Mayor, Vice Mayor, this is council and Vice, Councilmember Hughes, this is Cliff. I can't speak to all the different items that are on Keith's list. But as an example, when they eventually get through court, many times, well, the, once there's a filing, the person cleans up the property and then we're able to dismiss the case. So we have had a couple of abatements where we are going all the way through and, and taking the lean against the property. And in fact, I think there's another one that I had filed that may have been cleaned up. And so we will be able to dismiss that. So certainly, once it makes it to court, it does take longer, but there is invariably a good result. If, if either, as you said, cleaned up and, and then a lean applied, or the property owner, it's kind of pushes them to clean up the property. So I, I can't tell you though, the, you know, on the number of cases that are with code currently.
Okay. I also, I question, how is the smart gov, the, I guess it's on the website, for citizens, they can put in a complaint? Is that correct or who ma, do I ask that to Brent since Keith's not on what?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember, I think Lisa can do the best job of giving you an update on the customer complaint portal. I think I sent out an email to council last month trying to update on that. The software that the town purchased did not work the way that it was supposed to work in terms of giving the type of reporting that, that council requested. I know that Trenton and, and Lisa have been working on this particular project.
So first off, I have to remind everyone, we are in call to the pub, or we're, we're in council reports. And so we're specifically supposed to be talking about those items within the reports that were listed. I will say that Trent and I need to come back to council and do a circle back around as to what the product we did purchase does and what it's able to do. It's more like a, it's more like a help desk where a citizen actually writes down a complaint, it sends on a letter, and it's not the monitoring of the see, click, fix type that we thought. At the next meeting, how about we put an item on the agenda to explain what it is we're doing, why, why it's not working, and maybe the steps we're going to take to make sure that it is corrected.
Sounds like a plan.
Trent, be working on that with me. He's on the call, right? Yes, he will.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any other questions regarding department head reports? Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and move on to our second call to the public. At this time, call to the public is open. If you are an attendee and would like to speak, please go ahead and raise your hand. Do you not see any raised hands? So at this time, we're going to go ahead and close the second call to the public and have our second call to the council for current events only. We'll start with Councilmember Mendoza.
I really don't have much. One thing I would like to know is if, you know, we have a couple of new businesses in the Anthem area. Maybe if we can get a, an estimated time of when they're going to open. I kind of support what Vice Mayor Cordes was saying about the safety of Hunt Highway. Yeah, once the Circle K opens out there, kids are going to be crossing that street. And if we can't control the traffic, then we might have some, some things going on on that street there. So I could foresee a lot of kids crossing that major, major road there. So that's a big concern. All I can say is happy, happy New Year to everyone and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Neil.
Really don't have anything. Happy New Year. Rest in peace, John Madden, a football legend. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Hughes.
I don't have anything either. Just, I'm ready to start a new year.
Excellent. Councilmember Rodriguez.
I don't have anything either. I hope everyone has a, had, had an amazing New Year celebration and that everyone's going to keep up with the resolutions if they made them. Hope everybody's enjoying the January weather. This is fantastic. So I'm just hoping everyone's safe and healthy.
Councilmember Anderson.
Oh, boy, I've got several things. The first being the new sheriff's firing range. I don't know if anybody else heard it, but New Year's Day, it started about eight or nine o'clock in the morning and you could hear bang, bang, bang. My wife first thought it was people still setting off fireworks the night before. And I said, no, that's, that's the sheriff's firing range. About two o'clock, it sounded like they were actually testing machine guns. It's very, you know, very loud, very clear in our neighborhood that there's a firing range close to us there. So I would like for the town to file a formal complaint with the county to just discontinue the use of that firing range so close to our town. So that's the most important thing. The second thing that I wanted to bring up is, you know, the traffic situation. I've had complaints about the traffic on American Way. It's even been suggested to me that we put speed bumps in because our, our policemen just don't have the time to sit out there and enforce speed control for two hours every morning because between six and eight o'clock, it's like, let's see who can get to work the fastest, you know? And so I'd like to see something done about that. And what else? Oh, the other thing that I did do, I watched the State of the Town, Tara, and I want to thank you. That was very interesting, very long. What was it? Way over an hour, wasn't it? So thank you for doing that. Other question, maybe Brent can, can follow, follow up on this is what's the status of the rodeo RFP? And also, at the last meeting on twelve sixth, I complained about the logos on our vehicles. I haven't heard anything back on that either. So I'd like to get a reply on both of those things. So that's my question for tonight. Thank you.
And Vice Mayor.
Um, since we're going to do RIPs, I'm going to give a shout out to our late and great Ms. Betty White. Can't believe it. She almost made it to a hundred and she was the coolest chick I think our country ever had. Um, I agree with John about the speeding even in our own community, but I think it's a problem everywhere and definitely needs to be addressed. And I apologize if I talked about something during the department reports because to me, that's when I should address issues I have with police department and things that I think they need to look at should be addressed during their, their report time. And I feel like it was already on there. So if I made an error, that will be on me, but I'm still going to talk about it during probably the wrong time. But I definitely, to me right now, we need to focus on traffic control and, you know, you'd like to blame it on construction people or vendors coming into our town, but it's us. It's our citizens are driving. Like we live on the, you know, Indy five hundred or the Audubon or whatever it's called. So we all need to just drive, slow down and be a little more cautious about our surroundings. And like Councilmember Mendoza said, with the new businesses coming, maybe even just the speed of Hunt Highway needs to be looked at in general. The whole stretch of it because it, it, the speeds do get above sixty-five on there. I've seen it, especially when it's not, you know, when people are trying to get to work on time. Other than that, just happy New Year to everybody. I hope everybody had great holidays and got to spend some time with some family or at least got to FaceTime with family or however they chose to do that. And let's hope, let's make sure that this year is a better year.
All right, I do not have much, but to kick off the new year, we did receive these activity guides in all of the mailboxes of eight, five, one, three, two. So just want to say thank you for mailing these out. Go ahead and take a look at them and see what programs you may be interested in signing up for or signing up your families for. If there's something that you're interested in and you don't see it listed, I'd encourage you to include it in your survey results or responses as well as reach out to our community services just to go ahead and give that feedback. We've been working on, as Councilmember Anderson had said, a state of the town for a while. And there was a little delay because of, you know, between COVID and some outages and things of that nature. Two thousand and nineteen was our original State of the Town. Twenty twenty, we felt like we were communicating almost, I mean, multiple times a week or at least weekly with everybody. So we did a combination between twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. And then this coming April, the chamber is going to be working in unison and we'll have an amazing, like a State of Florence. So look for that. I'm excited to be able to participate in that as well as multiple members of different entities. So it will be absolutely engaging and amazing. I'm hoping to have a better twenty twenty-two and we're ready to move forward. That being said, we are virtual. I, I'm ready to be in person. So council, if you're ready to be in person, please reach out to Ms. Garcia. So that way, you know, we can go ahead and proceed accordingly. We have beautiful council chambers that have been revitalized with new sound systems and new voting. So I'm looking forward to utilizing that technology as well as testing the system to make sure that our public can hear that investment that was made. So I don't have any further at this time. So with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. Thank you so much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
We are adjourned. Have a good evening.